Council Agenda Township Precipity Troy Hills Regular Township Council Meeting of August 20th, 2024. Introduction, posting a notice. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 4th, 2024, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on January 8th, 2024. May I ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath has an excused absence. Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryan, Township Attorney Michael Avery, Municipal Clerk Khaled Madden. Council President, we have a quorum. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Upcoming meeting, September 10th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is an agenda meeting. September 24th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is a regular meeting. Ordinances, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2024-12, bond ordinance providing for various acquisitions and improvements for the golf utility at the Township Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris State of New Jersey appropriating 372,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 372,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice of the ordinance for the ordinance 2024-12 was published in a daily record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills on July 30th, 2024, introduced at the July 23rd, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept, motion ordinance 2024-12 be heard in its second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Public hearing. Motion to open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-12.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public to speak on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, come on up, Nick.
It's not talk, it's a question. Could you give some idea of what these improvements are?
Is that your only question?
Uh, yeah.
I wrote them down last night. When they were introduced, I wrote them down. I don't remember what they were. Did you recall, Jimmy?
Oh, sorry.
He's asking about what the improvements on the golf utility. I remember asking about them last month. They seem like they're basic HVAC and just.
Yeah, I have.
Keep us all stuck on me.
Yeah, I have it here. The purchase of aeration equipment, including but not limited to a Procore 1298, the purchase of two force blowers, and various improvements in the golf course, including but not limited to a new gas boiler, roof, and gutter repairs, improvements to all golf buildings, including the installation of gutter guards, foundation improvements to the storage building, heating ventilation, and air conditioning vent replacement to the East Golf Course Building, replacement to heating elements in the garages, purchase and installation of interior and exterior security cameras, replacement of grease traps, repairs to concrete sidewalks and steps, and the replacement or upgrade of kitchen equipment. The improvements and purposes shall also include but not limited to as applicable all work, materials, equipment, labor, and appurtenances necessary, therefore incidental thereto.
I didn't realize it was on page.
I didn't either.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-12.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was written in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above ordinance 2024-12.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. 2020 ordinance 2024-13, bond ordinance providing for various 2024 capital acquisitions and improvements for the Township Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris State of New Jersey. The township appropriating 8,173,621 dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 7,784,070 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2024-13 was published in a daily record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills on July 30th, 2024, introduced at the July 23rd, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept, ordinance 2024-13 be heard in its second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing for ordinance 2024-13.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only.
Hi, I'd like to, can you provide any context to what the various items are that are in the 8 million?
Sure. Um, first is engineering, various stormwater and drainage improvements, including but not limited to repairs to the detention basins, ditch, swale, and water quality basin cleaning and inlet upgrades to meet stormwater compliance. Engineering upgrades to traffic signals, including but not limited to equipment, controllers, and detection devices at various intersections throughout the township. Engineering, annual inspections and repairs to various dams located throughout the township. Engineering, the purchase and installation of solar LED traffic signs for speed limits and other regulatory signage throughout the township. Engineering, various improvements to Vale Road from Route 46 to Baldwin Road. Engineering, drainage channel improvements at Drummond Drive and cleaning to reduce flooding in the area. Engineering, the replacement of drainage pipes along Wall Street. Engineering, resurfacing of the parking lot at the Water Department Building. Engineering, Phase 9 roadway improvements to Mount Tabor Road. Engineering, the purchase of a pickup truck for the Township Inspector. Streets and roads, purchase of various vehicles, including but not limited to a Dynapax roller, a Sterling dump truck, and an International Dump Truck. Parks and Forestry, purchase of various dump trucks and a loader. Parks and Forestry, replacement of the electrical box at Sea Field. Parks and Forestry, various improvements to the bathroom building at Lenny Lenape Park, including but not limited to replacement of the roof and skylights. Sanitation, purchase of three International Garbage Trucks, White Cottage, Phase 2 stabilization and stabilization, stabilization improvement, sorry, to White Cottage. And Stickley Museum, repairs to Stickley Museum, including but not limited to the Horse Barn. Police Department goes, Police Department, Office of Emergency Management, purchase of marked police Ford interceptors and unmarked Chevy Tahoe police vehicles. Police Department, Office of Emergency Management, 9/11 system upgrade, server replacements, printer replacements, and purchase and installation of automated license plate readers at multiple intersections throughout the township. Again, Police Department OEM, feasibility studies on various land acquisitions and renovations for the Emergency Operations Center to include emergency medical services, fire prevention, and animal control. Emergency Medical Services, purchase of an ambulance. Emergency Medical Services, purchase of stretchers and stair chairs. UCC, that's Uniform Construction Code, purchase of two Ford Sport utility vehicles, recreation, installation of a cricket mount, and Section 20 costs.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
You're calling me, again. I'd just like to remind everyone, if these store updates are improvements, and we don't encourage people to manage their sanitation properly with plastic bottles blown all over in the wind, or store owners to clean up in front of their premises on a regular basis, all that plastic eventually winds up in the sewer and in the waterways and in the soil and everything. So it has to, there should be some accompaniment to try to at least encourage people to have better practices. And especially along the river, you go down by the Rockaway River, a lot of them sewers are out big, they have a big mouth. It rains down here, they go in and you see all the plastic floating down the river. So if, if you can keep that in mind.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, um, go, uh, this is only for during the public session, Mr. Swartz, you can speak. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-13.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Floor is closed. Whereas the above ordinance was written in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution for ordinance 2024-13.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, County of Morris State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 430 titled zoning to amend, Section 430-153 titled accessory uses to update same. The notice for ordinance 2024-14 was published in a daily record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills on July 30th, 2024, introduced at the July 23rd, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept, ordinance 2024-14 be heard in its second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing for ordinance 2024-14.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak. Okay, seeing no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is closed. Whereas the above ordinance was written in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2024-14.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, uh, public session, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is now open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on any matter.
Do I have to identify myself?
You can just give your name. You do not have to give your address, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann O'Brien. I live in Mount Tabor, and I'm in Phase 2 of the water line replacement project, unfortunately. So first thing I want to say is I want to thank the Water Department for the questionnaire that they sent out about possible obstructions. I think that was very wise in light of all the horrible experience that has gone on in Phase 1. I'll leave it at that, and use no foul language. At the last meeting that I attended about this water project, which was in the Tabernacle, if you remember, Jamie.
I do.
There was talk of possible bulleting of lines. My understanding, what was explained to me at that time from the gentleman from the Water Department, was that this was a possible option where a pipe, a new pipe, would be shot through the existing pipe, so that there wouldn't be a lot of disruption. I am asking this because where my water pipeline is, it goes right through my dining room. So my concern is, are they gonna like rip my house apart? And so what I want to know is when the bid process goes out, does that get detailed in there as an option to bullet lines as opposed to just ripping people's properties apart and tearing down fences and ripping up driveways and sidewalks and all of that? That's one question I have. Then, the, I'd, I'd also like to know, in the bid process, because the experience that has been had in Phase 1 with regal contracting has been appalling, is it possible that you would have to hire them again in a bid process? Those are the questions that I have.
I, so, in the bid spec, you could put that in there, that bullet process, and we can talk to the Water Department about that. And secondly, from the memo I received yesterday afternoon from the Water Department, I don't think the town would be interested in that particular contractor.
Thank you, Jesus!
And I don't believe the contractor would be looking to do work for the township either, so it may be helpful, but.
Excellent.
I can't prom, I can't promise that.
Right.
We can't prevent it from, but besides being the lowest, you have to be the lowest responsible bid, so if there's a history where somebody has not been responsive, they haven't done the work properly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you could disqualify them.
Okay, and so to prove that they have not been responsible, you have to have written evidence of that?
Well, I don't want to, yes, I don't want to get into too much because in case it goes that way, but yes, the best thing would be written evidence, and I think the water utility has done a pretty good job, at least on our end thus far of.
Oh, I could get you lots of letters.
Yes.
To support that.
So, I think if that's necessary, we'll let you know.
Mm-hmm.
But like I said, I don't believe the contractor's interested in doing another Phase 1 project, and I don't believe the township's interested in continuing with the current developer, our current contractor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mary Ann, one thing I'm, I'm aiming to do, because I can see this landscape is changing, I will, I'll speak to Kevin with regards to having another meeting at the Tabernacle.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll have the Water Department with us as well, so.
That would be very positive.
Yeah, it was a great, it was actually very good, so we'll do it again.
All right, great.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Nancy Chakov. On your resolution, 2024-143, for the Mountain Way Water Tank Rehabilitation Project, you said the contract was awarded to Union Painters, but on the bottom it says United Painters Inc. And then it says it again here. So who's, which company is it? Is it United Painters or Union Painters? It's written differently in both spots.
I can answer that.
Is that your only question?
Yeah, it's, I want to know.
Good.
Because it's here and it's here, two different ways.
Yeah, sorry to the public for the confusion on that. We made a mistake. It's, uh, it's United.
United Painters.
Yes.
Okay, so all things.
And thank you.
Has to be changed, both, thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman, for putting that out to us.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I'd like to talk about the fair share housing lawsuit and the Board of Ed audit a little bit. So first, Mr. Cryan, thank you very much for responding to my questions last week requesting information on those two items. I wanted to follow up on a couple of things. First, I just wanted to make it clear that my purpose in asking these questions is only to provide some oversight on how the town is spending our tax money. I have no inherent bias toward or against either the fair share housing lawsuit or the BOE audit. If they appear to be good uses of our time and money and have a high probability of success, and will generate important benefits that cannot otherwise be achieved, I would support them. Basic logic. Regarding the fair share housing lawsuit, you said that this is months away from being filed. I understand that the DCA process is that they will be issuing municipal housing obligation numbers in October. The towns will have until the end of January to either accept the numbers or get different numbers approved by the state. If they can't reach an agreement with the state, municipalities must file a challenge in court by the end of February. Is Precipity's plan consistent with this timing? Are you gonna wait until you receive the DCA numbers and try to work with them before filing a suit? This would seem very complicated if you're planning to do this in conjunction with other towns. Or is the Precipity lawsuit on a totally different track? So those are a couple of questions. You made it sound as if the reason this will take months is because of the challenge of working with other munis, not the DCA timing. If the purpose of the lawsuit is to work with other towns to stop or slow this process, why are we not filing now instead of in several months? Because in several months, the process will be, you know, the train will have left the station and things will be in progress. What are the issues preventing this from happening now? Why aren't the attorneys for all these towns meeting now to put this together? I also have questions about the legal arguments and the legal strategy. If we're gonna work within the state plan timeframe and first try to get a plan approved by using the numbers the DCA gave us, then I can see not having all of our legal arguments in place because we haven't gone through that process. If on the other hand, we're gonna file a suit based on other claims, but we don't have clarity now as to what our claims are, what makes us think that we would have them in a couple of months? I've been involved in similar processes, and the first thing you do is always to establish the legal arguments and evaluate their probability of success. In other words, provide a clear and compelling legal strategy. The article that you sent on Milburn is a good cautionary tale, it would seem, of a town that went to court without a strong case and is now paying the price for that and paying legal fees. You cited a number of very good points about the problems being caused by fair share housing, but it's not clear which, if any, of them form a legal basis for a lawsuit. I did not see any claims of violations of the law in your statement. Are we suing to protect property, recover damages, claim some form of discrimination, challenge the tight timeframes? Frankly, the time to address many of these was when the fair share housing law was first being enacted by the, by the state, but I don't understand exactly what are, what the basis is on which we're gonna file a suit. As to the role of the Highlands Council, I have been hopefully, hopeful eternally, that they can help reduce our numbers, but I never thought that they could save the day. I remain hopeful that the Highlands Council tools described by Ben Spinelli will help us calculate the build-out numbers that are more favorable than what the DCA requires by determining available land for development that is not environmentally constrained. Well, that remains to be seen. One point in which I'm fairly certain is that the Highlands Council does not have the ability to shift obligations among the towns, which is, I think, what you implied in your letter. The Fair Share Housing Center has said that if the regional need for each, if the need for each region, because they're gonna put that send out numbers by region, cannot be met because the Highlands munis cannot accommodate them, then the remaining regional need is not assigned elsewhere, it just disappears. So there's no need to shift numbers around between towns. As to the Board of Ed audit, you said it would only review publicly available documents. I know that Mr. McGrath, who unfortunately is not here tonight, has already done some excellent analysis of these documents regarding predictions of new students from developments versus actual additions, birth rates, long-term decline in annual enrollments, student-to-teacher ratios, et cetera, capacity versus expected enrollments. Have you looked at his analyses? What else are you asking from the formal audit? And how do you know that you can't get it from efforts like Mr. McGrath's? So these may not be the most concise, most concise set of questions, and these are both very, very complex issues.
Yes.
But that was the next phase in my thinking about trying to understand what's going on. So whatever answers you can provide, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolsky.
You want me to just address, like, as far as the fair share or affordable housing litigation, I don't think we should be discussing, like, strategies, what our strong points are, our weak points are at this point in time. Certainly, when the town decides to move forward with that, if they do, you're gonna pass a resolution authorizing the litigation, and at that time, I think you could at least explain this is the, this is the basis for the lawsuit. But I don't, certainly don't want to give any possible opponents the leg up by being able to watch this meeting or get copies of the minutes to find out what our strategy is. That's it. I think, Council President, if you.
Sure.
So, um, when it comes to that lawsuit and, and the months, I said it was more about giving a conservative timeframe to put it all together. And it's, it's not, we're not relying on just this governing body to, you know, lead the charge here. There's other municipalities, I believe Montville is one of them, that is, is leading the charge on this. And there's a discussion over strategy, of course, and that's, that's ongoing, and that'll be talked about. There's also a discussion about funding this and how the lawyers who will handle it will get paid. So it's a, it'll be a breakdown among members of cost and strength in numbers, cheaper than going out ourselves, better opportunity of, of being successful, going out with others. And so that's, that's part of, you know, those little nuanced things are, are part of the reason why it'll take a little bit of time. And it may not take months, it may take months. So we'll see, but I, I'll talk to you offline about this as I get more information each step of the way. I'll just send you a quick email and say, hey, here, we're with this, we're at this and all of that. So, so you're in the know with it, because your emails back and forth and your questions and some of your replies have been very helpful to me in helping, you know, kind of take this, this big bear down to, you know, littler bear right now. So, so that's where it's at with that. I'm, I'm sorry, one, one more, I'm sorry, sorry about that. As far as the great stuff that Councilman McGrath did, is he did an incredible study on it. Incredibly time-consuming and difficult to do on your own. What, it, that's kind of the crux of where all of this started. Some of the numbers that are out there and are talked about are changed and they're differing and they're all over the place, and it's hard to get clarification on things. So having an expert, a financial expert, some of those schooled in school financing, to take a look at this stuff and analyze it and give us, you know, their thoughts on it, is just smart business. It's doing our due diligence. That's all that is.
You're calling me, I was wondering if anyone from his council or, or the mayor or anyone from the municipality is going to attend the, the 20 years of the Highlands at the Boratorium, the Freeland House at the Boratorium?
I am.
Just, other than Judy, is anyone?
Yes.
Oh, the mayor, all right.
I, I hope you read it because there's four, three things here that, that the Highlands is gonna help Precipity out. The first one is the adoption of the amendment to the Regional Master Plan that's been completed concerning Round 4 of the housing. And then three additional member of measures will be available. The first, guidance on how Round 4 affordable housing should be created. This document will essentially be an instrument manual for municipal planners, how to create how, the housing plan that is consistent with the regional management plan. Second will be the instruction, how to calculate each municipality's build-out. Build-out. Overall development potential for each town is the foundation for determining the affordable Overall development potential for each town is the foundation for determining the affordable housing unit count that must be incorporated in each plan. A GIS, geographic information system tool base to calculate the build-out is being created by the Highlands staff and will be available to every town. A training session by Highlands staff will be available to every town. A training session for municipal planners and officials will be conducted in the early fall. The third is a round of grant funding to pay for the planning work. These grants will be open to all Highlands municipalities. However, priority for this limited funding will be given to conforming towns. So we're a conforming town now, so that's good. But what I, what I see, and I've discussed it with a friend of mine from the Highlands Coalition, Parsippany is, is an outlier. We're, we're built out already, but we're in need for redevelopment with all this corporate real estate we have. So that's going to be the dilemma to overcome. That's why I keep on saying, they have to make more affordable in the ratio and less luxury or market will bear. And that should be part of the lawsuit, because it makes sense. So, you know, I don't know how many more environmentally sensitive lands we do have left, but they should be guarded by this. In other words, it'll just be redevelopment, there won't be any new land, land-taking. And could anyone answer, when does Mr. Spinelli do, do to show up here for a...
I invited him again, for September 10th, we'll see what happens.
He doesn't want to come to Parsippany?
Well, no, they were waiting for some of this to, you know, be developed, and so, maybe he was on vacation, so I just reached out to him again.
All right.
Yeah.
So, we, we did do a positive thing by getting into conformance, and we have to deal with the redevelopment aspect, and the, the lawsuit should include the most affordable and the least luxury or market will bear. So, I'll leave it at that.
Joseph Perillo, 66, Liamond Drive. I'm a Fire Commissioner of Fire District Three, Lake Parsippany. I'm here on behalf of the whole Board of Fire Commissioners. Has to do with the paver sidewalk that runs along Halsey Road that is on the township right-of-way. It is in need of replacement. I met with the mayor a few times about this. Lately, I'm getting no answers. I've made appearances to his office with his administrative assistant, left messages, got no response. Board of Fire Commissioners right now are very, we're in a situation where if there's a lawsuit because somebody gets hurt, it's going to come against the township. Our attorney, Anthony Buco, addressed this issue last year with the administrator. We got no satisfactory response. So, I think the council needs to address this issue, because we're not getting anywhere. It's a paver sidewalk that was put in 22 years ago. You can't run 30-ton fire trucks over a sidewalk that's not made to hold that weight. And now it's in disrepair, it's crumbling apart. A lot of people walk this area, and it's, something's going to happen. Can I get a response from the mayor?
Yes, you can. First and foremost, we did speak about it at the touch of truck and things that we can do here in the town. So, we did have conversations, several conversations, Joe, and you know that. In a right-of-way, as you know, when something's in a right-of-way, the town really isn't responsible for the right-of-way, but we did agree, you and I, that the township would do it. So the funds weren't there. Okay? So now, we've had conversations with our engineer, and I'm not going to let you take over from here, because you had more of the conversations with regards to it. We're not going to let you flip the bill. I, I never got anything from Anthony Buco, he never called me up or anything, the senator never called me up or anything. So, I'm just, you know, he, he never contacted me, and he usually, and he usually would contact me, the senator, but he did not on this matter. I just want to make that clear on the record. But yeah, we're, we're willing to, you know, fix the sidewalk. I don't think it's going to be the little bricks again, I don't think that's conducive for that area. Like you said, you have these, I don't know how many tons vehicles going over those. But we did have a meeting with our engineer, so, and you can take it from there.
Thanks. Have you spoken with our engineer? Last week, the engineer told me that the project is not in his hands, and it may not be funded this year. I brought that back to my Board of Fire Commissioners last night, and you can imagine the response I got. So who's, who's, who am I to believe?
It's in the engineer's hands. He's trying, we're trying to find, to get the funds to make sure it gets done as quickly as possible. That's where it's at right now. Now, this is a project that is, would be your responsibility, but the town is taking over the responsibility for you. Just because it's in the right-of-way doesn't make it our responsibility to sidewalk like it would be anywhere else in town. But because of the work that you guys do for the town, mayor and the council have talked about doing this for you, and it will be done. It's just a matter of making sure that we get the funds together.
Okay. Let me just reiterate. The firehouse was built 22 years ago. The town council at that time had a sidewalk program where they put in a beautiful paver sidewalk, which was the wrong thing to do. So how can you say that it belongs to Board of Fire Commissioners District Three when you put it in?
Well, let me just read Section 360 hyphen 28 of the Parsippany Code, which says, duty abutting landowner, the construction, repair, alteration, reeling, and maintaining of sidewalks are hereby declared to be the duty of the abutting landowner. So whoever's property the sidewalk's on, it's their responsibility to repair the sidewalk.
Yeah, and, and a week and a half ago, that's, that's when we had our last conversation with the engineer about this, and he had mentioned that he does not want to do the pavers again, that he wanted to make sure that, that it's not the pavers again. So he was working on, trying to figure out pricing and trying to get it taken care of. So it's, it's in the works. If I had the ability to do it myself, I'd go out there and do it myself, and I don't.
Well, I, I saw them this Wednesday. I went to the engineer's department and I asked, where are we on this project?
Yeah.
And the engineer himself said he doesn't have the project, and that it may not be funded this year. So you're talking about a week and a half, and I'm talking about a week.
Well, we'll, we'll speak with the engineer tomorrow. I'll speak, in fact, I got a better one, Joe. How about you have a meeting with us? It'll be used that way, we're all in the same room. Okay? If you want to bring the senator, that would be good as well.
Okay.
All right, because this is where we have, you know, not this one said this, this one said that, we'll, we'll all be in the same room. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Sarah Grasso from Parsippany. At the last council meeting, it was stated that there would be a cannabis presentation tonight, and I don't see it on the agenda, so I was hoping to get some kind of update on when that would happen.
I'll give you an update right now with regards to it.
Is that your only question?
Yes.
Okay, the cannabis ordinance as it is now, I don't feel comfortable with. I'm not, I'm not going to present a cannabis ordinance I don't feel comfortable with. So what I did was I reached out to, and I know some of us know him up here, Ron Mendello, and I'm going to be sitting with Ron Mendello to go over the ordinance, where I feel I could feel comfortable with it, as well as the council. And Ron seems to be the guru of, for attorneys for cannabis, and we had a really positive conversation, and basically what Ron said is one of great ordinance that fits Parsippany. And that's what we're going to do, and that's what I want to do as well, that fits Parsipony. And I, I would assume, because I'm going to be meeting with him this week or next week, Jamie and I will be meeting with him, and we're going to present, he'll do the presentation, because he's the pro. And that's just my opinion, I've heard so many good things about him, I had a great conversation with him last week, and I'm looking forward to seeing him and getting the cannabis ordinance on, and the presentation as well.
My name is, my name is Bob Venedzia, and I, I live in Parsipony. Judging from the comments made by the administration and some of the council members at the past few town council meetings, it seems like an ordinance allowing the retail sale of marijuana in Parsipony will become a reality in the near future. The mayor's been very honest about why a retail marijuana ordinance will pass, as he has said, on more than one occasion, it's all about the money. But at what cost of Parsipony will that additional, additional revenue come? My goal is not to prevent an ordinance that allows the retail sale of marijuana in Parsipony. Rather, I want to make sure that whatever ordinance is drafted contains language which calls for the monitoring of the effects of retail marijuana on Parsipony, and which safeguards the township against any possible negative effects that a, that the dispensary business may have on the quality of life in the township. In order to provide the necessary safeguards, I recommend that the ordinance should contain a built-in expiration date of five years after the first dispensary is allowed to operate. After that time, the council would reevaluate if the dispensary business should be renewed. For example, if the sale of marijuana causes unacceptable increases in the crime rate in the township, the number of traffic accidents, the rate of marijuana usage by school-aged children, or the number of marijuana-related incidents requiring police intervention, then the ordinance should not be renewed, and all dispensary licenses in the township should be revoked. If you're going to approve the sale of a drug that has numerous adverse side effects, and to which the Center of Disease Control now estimates that 10% of its users will become addicted, the ordinance must include safeguards for the future of Parsipony. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jack Ray, 15 Freland Drive. Wanted to raise a couple of issues. Obviously, I've been here before, and I'm a member of the Parsipony Board of Education. One of the things we wanted to talk about was the audit of the Board of Education, the redundant audit of the Board of Education. Robin Tedesco and Dr. Sutter worked very hard to achieve a budget, budget targets, given the restraint, the restraints imposed by the state of New Jersey, namely the 2% state cap. The accusations of financial mismanagement are wrong-headed. The school district is one of 27% of New Jersey's school districts to complete their audit by the December 5th deadline. The audit received an unqualified audit opinion, which is the best kind, unlike the town of Parsipony, which received an adverse opinion. There were no internal control deficiencies found during the audit, and, which reflects well on Robin Tedesco and Dr. Sutter. The Board of Education auditor expenses should be, it has to be discussed if they should be incurred by the town, or if they should be a campaign expense, because they're obviously being muted. This auditor is, is for campaign purposes only. As far as the pilots go, we'd like to, I hate the Monday morning quarterback, but since this is trending, I guess I'll have to join the trend. Announcing repeatedly that the town is wide open to pilots puts Parsipony in a, in a weak negotiating position. Why are all the pilots 30-year terms? The financial expert that was here in November said that they are as short as 11 years, but it seems that all the pilots that we are pursuing are 30 years. 1515 Route 10 is 600 units, it translates into 240 children based on the demographic studies that we've done. We have the facility in progress, but educating 240 children creates a, a cost outflow each year of about $6 million. That has to be funded somehow. Where will that money come from? Any residential pilot deal should include a revenue share equal to the cost to educate these children. And that's about it, but thank you.
Tim Berrios, 24, Farstead Drive. On August 6, 2024, like many of my fellow Parsipony taxpayers, I sat in this very chamber and listened to the administration announce a taxpayer-funded audit of the Board of Education. Let me be clear, this audit seems like nothing more than political retaliation against board members who once supported the administration but now find themselves at odds, especially after residential development pilots were negotiated without consulting the key stakeholders in our town. This audit, which falls under the pay-to-pay statute limits, conveniently bypasses the need for our town's council to approve it. But let's not forget, the Board of Education already conducts its own taxpayer-funded audit, which is fully public and submitted to the Department of Education in Trenton. In all my many years on the board, never once has the state of New Jersey questioned our financial integrity. At the same August 6 meeting, as the administration wrapped up its announcement, I watched in disbelief as Council Vice President, who served as Board of Education President for six years, sat silently. I served with him during those years, often on the finance committee. We reviewed every audit, asked tough questions, and met with the business administrator, the superintendent, and the auditors to ensure everything was above board. Not once did the Council Vice President raise a single concern about our fiscal management. Yet now, the administration accuses the school district of poor planning and mismanagement. I remind the council that the Parsipony School District is currently building additional classrooms at the Littleton Elementary School, without asking the public for any extra funding. Does that sound like poor planning to you? As an elected official, I've sadly come to expect slander from those who disagree with the current administration. But what's truly disgraceful is seeing hard-working, dedicated professionals in our school district who count every nickel and dime to keep our budget within the 2% state cap and pass our audits publicly disparaged. These are people who do everything possible to avoid cutting services while providing the best education to our students. So, I asked the town council, not the administration, why now? Why start this audit after six consecutive years of earning the certificate of excellence in our audits? With the former Board of Education President sitting right there beside you, someone who knows the quality of the work being done, why now? Is this political retribution? Is it because we're fighting for our fair share for the 7,000 students and 1,000 teachers and staff in our district? Or is it because someone said something at an event that the administration didn't want? The public deserves an answer. Why now?
Good evening. My name is Suzie Golderer from Parsipony. I am a board member on the Parsipony Troy Hills Board of Education. I am here, though, as a private citizen and homeowner. I am very concerned and disappointed that the mayor has taken to disparaging our school district and hard-working staff. I am also very saddened to have heard Councilman Neglia saying absolutely nothing. Councilman Neglia, you served on the Board of Education for many years, and I can't believe that you allowed the mayor to say things about the district staff, knowing exactly how the budget and finances of the school district are strictly managed. Board members do review and approve the monthly bills and yearly budget, yet the board has nothing to do with putting it together in any way. The board asks questions, but in no way do board members get to say what they personally want added or taken out of the budget. Board members, unlike what people may think, have to stay in their lane and cannot administer the district. Board members are held tightly-bound ethics rules that the municipal government obviously is not. It is the responsibility of the superintendent and business administrator, along with the rest of the administration, who make up the line items and the budget based on many meetings and discussions with pertinent staff and what it's looking to be achieved in the year to come within the district. Every school district has to send their budget to also be approved by the county superintendent's office. The district has received awards in the last six consecutive years, and the way the budget is put together and managed, there are about 30 districts in the state of New Jersey that received this award out of 593. 70% of our school district, of our school district budget is salaries and benefits, which leaves 30% to cover school needs for buildings and grounds of the 15 school buildings, supplies, furniture, technology for the school, transportation costs, and a whole lot more. Parsipony has never received back 100% of the money they sent to Trenton for education. The percentages I'm going to mention are not accurate to the decimal point, they're just reference. just reference. Parsippany School District used to receive around 30%, and now with the funding formula, Parsippany receives less than 60% of state aid. So it may seem to an average citizen that though our numbers have remained static in the 7,000 to 7,200 range of pupils, the district is receiving more money, yet it's still not receiving 100% of their money. The Parsippany School District has always worked with less money, since more money is always sent to the other school districts such as Newark and Jersey City. The school district stands to lose over $30 million for each 30-year pilot program negotiated by the mayor and the town council for each housing pilot program approved. Mayor, you have stated that individual board members have made the Board of Education political because they attended a Parsippany mayoral candidate's announcement. Yet, you have in the past welcomed any person, regardless of position, to support you. Board members have been, have attended your fundraisers, and no pushback for any one of their attendance. I supported you for council races, I supported you for mayor, until you backtracked. The only, the main promise that you made was to get rid of Inglesino your first term, and on the first meeting, you backed from that. To say things about board members is bad enough, because it is only being done for vindictive reasons. Board members are elected state officials, and though there is, there is no compensation, it is understood that criticism is part of the position. But to go after staff that make their living working for the district, working hard to provide a superb education with the small percentage we receive back from the state as aid is abhorrent. You, mayor, have never supported my candidacy, candidacy for anything, and I have never disrespected or embarrassed you because of it. Why? Because you have the right to support candidates that align your values and principles. I have the same rights as you do.
30 seconds, Ms. Chaff.
And I can support whoever on their respective office. Calling people names like "money hungry," really? I find that very unprofessional. I implore that you meet with the BOE to do the people's work. Politics should not enter the work of the municipal government and school district of the same town. The community at large is more important than anyone's ego.
My name is Andy Chaffo, and I'm the president of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education. I and other board members who spoke tonight are speaking solely on our own. We are not representative of Parsippany BOE. Council President, as Mrs. Golderer alluded to, past and current board members have supported the campaigns of the mayor. We have knocked on doors, walked, and called on his behalf. He encouraged this political activity when it benefited him. Only now that it supports, his support has turned to his opponent, is this activity not allowed and irrational? Mayor, that is a textbook definition of hypocrite. Barbario and Inglesino, Inglesino and Barbario, this dynamic duo of destruction that continues to harm the town. The Barbario bungalow high-density housing projects that he negotiated will harm our town, make no mistake. I am going to refer to these developments as Barbario's bungalows. Barbario's bungalows were the rich attorney Inglesino and the developers were tax breaks paid for by the rest of us. Now, a little bit about the audit and this auditor, Frank De Maria and Associates. Council, what specific concerns the township has about the school's budget? I've never heard any. For the township to take the extraordinary action of spending taxpayer dollars auditing the school district, surely something specific must be of concern. Or is the mayor seeking taxpayer-funded political retaliation as a pretext for this sham audit? Make no mistake, this is not an independent audit. The township has no genuine authority to audit the school district. This is a political retribution unleashed by an unhinged mayor with tacit approval by this council. It's a taxpayer-funded hatchet job. Now, let's get back to the audit of Frank De Maria. And so the Barbario and Inglesino dynamic duo of destruction, we now add Frank De Maria and create the triad of treachery. Three very chummy people. De Maria is the CFO for the town of Belleville. Inglesino is the redevelopment attorney for the town of Belleville. Inglesino, Barbario, and De Maria, the triad of treachery. Further, Inglesino and De Maria also represent Hackettstown. Very chummy indeed. Council President, what was the vetting process to hire this independent quote-unquote audit firm? Were other firms interviewed? I suspect not. I suspect that this was a Barbario and Inglesino setup from the beginning that was something like this. Hey, John, it's Jamie. That school board is really pissing me off. What can we do to stop this? Well, Jamie, maybe we can hire an auditor, and they can find something in their budget. John, it's a great idea. Okay, let the township pay them a few thousand dollars, and they'll find something for a mayor. Okay, great. Because this is a sham. Now, this auditor, De Maria and Associates, was a school district auditor for Linnhurst. Despite being their auditor for years, the De Maria firm failed to uncover a district deficit in Linnhurst of $4 million. That audit firm failed. The Linnhurst School Business Administrator and the De Maria firm were not removed, in other words, they were fired, and a state monitor was inserted. And this is who Barbario wants to bring to our town. Dear friends and town council members, did you know that the last township audit uncovered a serious concern that quote, "could enable a person to perpetuate errors and prevent detection within a reasonable period of time," unquote? The township correct its own documented audit deficiencies instead of creating lies about the school district. In conclusion, we have learned that Barbario lied to protect his political position. He will create a false narrative without merit to sow division. Barbario is inept or worse in negotiating with developers to create Barbario's bungalows all over town. He is happiest when neighbors batter his whim without question. He deflects to others to cover up his own administration's failures. Mayor, you're failing at your job. Now, how much time does I have?
You have a minute and three seconds.
Okay. I will, I will give you a very good example of the mayor's deceit through the truth. He posted this on his Facebook page this afternoon. And for the most part, it's an accurate depiction of local property taxes and how it is dispersed in a municipality. The vast majority goes to the school district. About 27 or so percent to the town, 5% to the county, some to the fire districts and some to the libraries.
30 seconds, Ms. Chaff.
What the mayor doesn't say is, per the state constitution, this is how all districts are funded. In every school district and every town, the chart would look the same. So he leaves that out. Now, in this chart, and I don't have the taxpayer-funded people to do these charts for me, 95% of pilots go to the town and 5% go to the county, shutting out fire districts, libraries, and the school district. It's a shame.
Richard Suarez, Parsippany, New Jersey. You know, Mayor, for several months, you stated at town council meetings that discussions between your administration and the Board of Ed were very close to reaching a deal as to how much funding would be supplied to the BOE from tax money generated by pilot properties. You stated you would not make comment until the agreement was finalized. Well, Mr. Mayor, it's now August, and the deal appears to still be in limbo. Exactly how hard can it be to come up with an agreement on these funds? The city is either going to stand up and do the right thing as far as the school funding goes, or it's going to reneg on its obligation to provide adequate money. If the city renegs, the burden to make up the missing funds will of course be placed on the existing homeowners in town. The residents deserve and demand that the BOE funding formula be finalized before any further pilot programs are approved by the town council at the behest of the mayor. As far as the audit goes, this is, this is a sham. Come on, we all know what's going on. We all know this is irrational, as, as the mayor said, said about people on, on the Board of Ed. What is rational about doing this when their audits have come back snow white year after year after year? Does the mayor have an inside tip that, that the cost of number two pencils are too high? I mean, you know, give us something. Don't, don't just say it's because it's irrational. You could say that about anything. I could say, say that about you wanting to do this audit to begin with. It's a joke. Everybody here knows it, what, what's going on. Shame on the council members who, who were on, on, on the Board of Ed. You know better. What's going on here? Let me get my blood pressure down. Also, what is going on with the renovations on, on the library? Are the state funds still available? Is there a sunset date on these funds? I was told that there isn't, but it's been an awful long time, and we have seen zero, nada, zip going on with the renovations. Are you really prepared to spend $6 million to renovate a building that's so old and so inadequate that you'd be wasting $6 million? I worked on, on, on projects where we renovated buildings. Many times, the majority of the times, it's cheaper and better in the long run to knock it down and start from scratch, so you're starting with a clean slate. Why no one else wants to admit that, I don't know. I worked for the state for 40 years, I've seen it. There's cost overruns on every renovation project because there's unforeseen things. And yet, the mayor, the council turn a blind, blind eye. What's going on with, with that? And I'm very disappointed here that the person who's going to be looking over the books for the city in regards to the Board of Education has any present or prior dealings with your very good friend, John. And everybody knows you guys are tight, so don't even say that that doesn't happen. Also.
30 seconds, sir.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to know what the cost is for the sidewalk renovations along North Bev- Bevwick Road. And we now have a fourth person killed, three on, on Route 46, which is a tragedy. I brought this up six weeks ago. What has the town done between, I, I brought this up and this last person being, being killed on, on, on Route 46?
Sir, time's up.
If nothing's being done, shame on all of you.
See no one else? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. Being resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial by the Township Council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes approval of minutes, set for the agenda meeting of 7:09, 24, and regular meeting of 7:23, 24. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Claude. A lot was said tonight, accusing me of politics, and you saw politics at its best tonight. So, with that being said, the tragedy on Route 46, Parsippany experienced, let me change my glasses. Parsippany experienced a third pedestrian fatality in less than six months on approximately 1.5 mile stretch of Route 46 last night. I was at that, you know, hit and run, really, really what it was, that we don't know, I don't know everything in details, but our team remains committed to do whatever we can to ensure. This is the last tragedy on our roads. Can't guarantee it. We can't stop people from crossing the road. We're going to be meeting with the NJDOT Commissioner O'Connor the last week of August with regards to Route 46 and, and all the state highways. We're also going to be meeting with the county with regards to county roads. The Baldwin Road repair update, and finally, it's going to be repaired after meeting with contractors. An analysis was, an analysis was performed through the sewer utility for the cost of repair that effect. Council awarded the contractor to make the necessary repairs to Jay Fletcher Creamer. Work is scheduled to begin on the evening of September 9th. This weekend was an eventful weekend. We had the Indian flag raising ceremony. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jigar Shah, who ran it with Raj Patel, the president of the Indian American Cultural Committee, and the emcee, Sandvi Pandya. Summer concert, this, this Friday night, we will have Super Trans Am. I could tell you they're a very good band. If anybody wants to come out and enjoy themselves, that would be a very good event to attend. Our farmer's market is going strong. We've regards, and I already mentioned cannabis, and I hear what you said, Bob. Some of those areas that I'm sticking, the where I'm having a tough time with, that's why I have to bring somebody in with regards to, you know, a perfect example would be, I don't want to stress our police department out, there's no way to really measure how much marijuana is in somebody's system. And just the way the laws are with regards to that, I don't want to put them in harm's way in, in, in dealing with situations. So, I brought a gentleman in that I, I really believe can do the job with regards to the cannabis. Yeah, we're not, I'm not, I agree with you. I've said it from day one, it's, it's about, at the end of the day, it's about getting revenue, and everybody has to be upfront about that. Some people wholeheartedly believe that it's not, not about that, and I've met individuals, because Sarah doesn't, and I, and I respect her for her thoughts and her opinions on it. As I said, Mary Ann, we're going to set up a meeting with, at the tabernacle again with regards to the, and I'll just give a little update on that, the galvanized pipes. What happened was, federal government, you know, the EPA, the federal EPA came out with a directive that no lead pipes would be in any municipalities. So, at that time, Parsippany was fine, we had no lead pipes. But then the state of New Jersey changed the course and said that galvanized pipes. And, and Mount Tabor, if anybody knows Mount Tabor, it's a very difficult area. Pipes went under houses, through other properties, and they're all galvanized, and a lot of individuals and families are affected. You know, you heard some stuff here tonight with regards to politics, as you saw tonight, you saw the political, in my opinion, nonsense that happened here tonight. They, they talk about, I'm not saying, I'm saying you guys in the back, absolutely, Andy. So, what happened here, they're, they're going back and forth and trying to negotiate this out in public. Fine. I said it today, I posted it, and this is what I'm going to say. Our Board of Ed's case and tax burning, burden, it's a burden on the town, and, and I, and I love the school system, I love the ed's case and all system, but the bottom line is, I hired somebody that can explain, because all these numbers are all over the place. And when you speak to Matt McGrath, the Councilman Matt McGrath.
All right, no, excuse me. Keep it down.
When you speak to Councilman, when you speak to Councilman Matt McGrath, he was an eye-opener. He showed me some stuff, and I went and I spoke to an auditor, can you help us decipher these numbers? And that's the bottom line. So, if, if, if everything's good, there's nothing to worry about. But the town, before it gives any money up to any organization, any other government body, has to do its due diligence. And that's what we're doing here in Parsippany. With regards to funding, when we lose a tax appeal, and we have many tax appeals coming up, when we lose a tax appeal, we don't get any money back. None. We got to pay the 63% twice. Whatever the school board gives us, we got to pay it, and we've got a billion dollars in tax appeals this year as of April 1st. We have a lot more tax appeals coming. We lost one last week, as, as we went and the council voted and to settle it. Okay, so the township gets hit twice. Okay, so the township gets hit twice. I'm sure we can come up with an agreement, but I wanna feel comfortable, and I believe the council wants to feel comfortable moving forward. You know, when you guys spoke, I didn't scream or yell, and you get up, you throw your arms in the air, Nancy, you're setting up there staring, that's fine, to what you have to do. I respected you when you spoke, I gave you the opportunity to speak, so I'm not gonna interrupt you.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do that.
So if, when you speak, I will wholeheartedly listen to you.
I'm listening.
Okay? And, and when I speak, I expect the same, that's all, that's mutual respect. So with that being said, I'm going through with the audit, I think it's prudent that the township does that, because when you hear that, and it's true, with, with, what the Board of Ed's case and president said, on the pilot, we get ninety-five percent of it, but we don't get any other dollars back, and I think that's why the legislators created that system, because they knew in hard economic times, which it was, pilots were a means of jump-starting an economy in a township. Or, or else what? You'd have vacant, you'd have vacant office spaces. And who, who at the end of the day is gonna pay for those vacant office spaces? You, the taxpayers. Nobody's here to hurt the school system, not at all, not whatsoever. I just wanna feel comfortable with a professional that can explain the numbers to me, to everybody. So that being said, you know, it's kinda funny, and there's no even need to even get mad anymore, because you start to look at some of the things and some of the things that people say. Um, I was gonna respond to some stuff that Mr. Barrios put on Facebook, but it truly is not worth it. Um, we're supposed to be professional, so I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna be professional. So that being said-
Please, please, please.
And that's, see, that's, that's exactly it, that's the disrespect you get. And when they wanna scream and yell in the back, put picket signs up, put signs up that we take bribes and all that kinda stuff, it kinda, it kinda, you kinda say to yourself, you know what, that's ridiculous. When you can't come to the table, you have to insult, and that's exactly what they do. They wanna insult, insult, but they don't tell you about the, they just wanna come and insult you so they can get their way. Well, you can insult me all you want, that's political satire, I'm used to it, I'll take it. And I can promise you, if you, if you ridicule me, and you call me names like it's been done on Facebook, I promise you, when I go to the police department and claim harassment and assassination plot, I guarantee you, I won't do that. So you can, you can call me any name you want, and you do it on Facebook, and that's fine, but that being said, um, I think once, once everything's said and done, we get our audit back, we get the recommendations, we get to the table, we negotiate, that's when I'll feel comfortable. And I hope the council feels the same way, because that's how I feel.
Well, I definitely wanna share my perspective, and I can assure you, I can't speak for the rest of the council, uh, I do not feel the same way. I feel that what we are seeing here is in response to a butchered process that took place from November to December, where the Board of Education was pleading with us at every single meeting to be involved in these mass development deals that have very real impacts on their day-to-day responsibilities as stewards of our taxpayer money on the Board of Education, and that wasn't done. That they were ignored, the people who had concerns were ignored, every single person who expressed opposition to what took place had their thumb nosed, and as we fast forward to the issue that is before us, an audit, um, I know I was blindsided by it, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think we need to call it what it is, that, that this threat to audit the Board of Education is simply a blatant act of retaliation designed to silence, silence dissent and suppress political opposition to people who hold a contrary view of how these pilot agreements took place. I don't think there's anything inappropriate about individual board members expressing their political viewpoints on what impacts our community. Um, we, we had council vice president Frank Neglia, who was the board of, board president at the time when he ran. There were no concerns then about the political activity, and it needs to be on a consistent basis treated the, the, the same way. Um, I, I think that this proposed audit, uh, really mirrors the definition of abuse of power. It's using government authority to target and punish those with differing views. That's what is happening here. If we wanted to have an understanding of the Board of Education's financials, we can watch the January fourth, twenty twenty-four tape, where their own auditor came before them for a full hour and watch it, as I have, and you'll see the following, that our Board of Education filed on time, that they're in the top twenty percent of school districts statewide, and all of their internal controls were above board. So this is a waste of taxpayer money and abuse of power.
Then, then the, then the audit, there's nothing to worry about.
Well, that's, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Who, who are you asking a question?
I'm asking the question of the council president. Are we voting for the audit?
Not tonight.
Okay. Do we have more than one bid for the audit? Or do we just hand it to one person? And the other question I have is, not question, it's a statement, where is, I know Mr. McGrath, councilman McGrath, went through this, why? And what was, what did he find? Because they, they do the, they did do a budget, and they did have an audit independently like we do, and it's expensive to do an audit, so I'm concerned, when we have so many things on the horizon, we have the current infrastructure, we have stormwater issues, we have development that's happening and not being filled, and then a next round of development that we're not meeting, even if we're talking about, when we all should be meeting together and working towards solving those problems cooperatively, so.
I think, and, and I think, uh, in, in that vein, we should make it very clear on record where each councilperson stands on this audit, so with that said, I, I would like to make a motion, um, for a resolution expressing opposition to this proposed audit.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second on that motion?
Well, I'll second it if we have, if that means that we all have to talk about what, going forward, is that-
Well, no, what would happen is, since I have, since I have-
What does the motion cover? I just think it should be discussed.
The motion, as, as the council member stated, um, is expressing opposition, uh, so even, it's, that, that's all, that's all the motion is, so in order, since I do have a motion on the table, uh, I would need a second, and if you wanna have discussion, you can, and if you don't, we will just proceed to a vote.
We can continue to discuss it, but I think it's-
You don't really need, a- as far as I'm concerned, at this particular point in time, uh, if you're doing a resolution or you're doing a motion for a resolution to discuss, that's not necessary, as you're already discussing it right now.
And because you don't have a resolution in front of us-
There's no resolution at this particular point in time, exactly, so I mean, again-
That don't mean it's always be contrary, but-
No, no, it's not about contrary, I'm just saying for procedural standpoint.
I'm misunderstanding, like, like, I was passing, I was, when we started talking about the audit last time, I was like, wait, what? Because-
Well, I think that's why it's not on tonight, so that you can get more-
Well, yeah, but, but where is the, aren't toward, I mean, these people are, are, are professional, they're not gonna put their, their professions at stake either, just like in, in the township, and people on our committees, we're, we try to do the best we can, we're not gonna put ourselves at risk. I can't imagine that there's a lot amiss there, especially if they have the accolades that they do from the state. I mean, we, we, we revere the police department and the public workers, but the teachers are so important too, in the Board of Ed.
Absolutely.
And it's just frustra- it's, I know this is politics and it's frustrating, and I just would like to see us working together to do more things, because we have a lot, we have a lot to cover, we have a lot going on, and this affordable housing thing is gonna, is, is a train coming at us, and we haven't really sat down to even talk about what that's gonna look like, and we need to talk with them, and we need to talk with the departments too. And, yeah, I, I know it's pilots, and I know the whole thing about real estate, however, there's more tools in the toolbox, and we should explore all, all the options that we have.
So I just wanna make clear for the record, Ms. Hernandez, that was not a second and we're just continuing?
No, that's not a se-
Yeah, I know, I just wanna make clear, it's just discussion at this point.
Do that, do we, we're discussing and-
And we don't have a motion at this particular point in time, at, at this point anyway, so if you guys just wanna continue the discussions, the town council does have the table, so if anybody else would like to speak, you're more than welcome to do so, if not, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the township attorney.
I, I have one today.
Absolutely, council president.
Um, the Economic Development Team alongside Mayor James Barbario will host a ribbon-cutting ceremony to welcome the following businesses, the public is cordially invited to join the celebration. Dunkin' Donuts, September seventh, two thousand twenty-four, nine thirty a.m., at nineteen eighty, Route Ten West, Mars Plains. Premium Digital Office Solution, Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, twelve p.m., one forty-one, New Road. And Premier Classic Cars, Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, eleven thirty a.m., three four six zero, Route Forty Six. The next meeting of the Economic Development Committee is on Tuesday, uh, excuse me, Thursday, September fourth, at six thirty p.m., at ninety East Halsey Road, third floor conference room, the public is invited, please RSVP with Chairman Frank Cahill at nine seven three, five five nine, six thousand. Thank you.
Any other member from township council?
I have one thing, and it's just, because we were talking about traffic, and, um, the Persippany Neighborhood Watch is having a New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, pedestrian and bike safety, a vision for safer streets in Persippany at August twenty-seventh, seven p.m., at the Persippany Municipal Courthouse. Please come. Seven p.m.
Anyone else from council? Okay, township attorney?
Yes, I just have a brief report. Um, as the council knows, Glenmont Commons developers had submitted an open request to the town for a sewer report that the town had commissioned and paid for, and, uh, this has to do with the sewer lines that are in Glenmont Commons developers, where the roads are terrible, so the, the sewer lines run, uh, adjacent to those roadways. Um, they submitted an open request, since the town hasn't decided whether or not we're gonna accept those sewers, or whether or not we're gonna accept the sewerage from Castor Line Estates, which is a development they're building in Denville, um, it was denied because it's pre-decisional. Uh, Glenmont Commons developers sued the town, as you know, uh, to get that, and we got the judge's order today, uh, which denied their relief. Um, said that our, the clerk's withholding of that report was proper, as it was pre-decisional, and, uh, hopefully that'll be the end of it. They're obviously entitled to appeal, but, you know, I don't know that that's gonna go anywhere. That's it.
Thank you.
Assistant Administrator?
I have no report tonight.
And I do not have a report tonight. Moving along to ordinance's first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four fifteen, bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility capital improvements in and by the township Persippany Troy Hills and the county of Morris, Deter, New Jersey, appropriating five million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand there, uh, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of five million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above, uh, the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council at the township Persippany Troy Hills, held on August twentieth, twenty four, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven p.m., prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building and said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-four sixteen, bond ordinance providing for various improvements and upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant in and by the township of Persippany Troy Hills and the county of Morris, Deter, New Jersey, appropriating nine million five hundred thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of nine million five hundred thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council at the township Persippany Troy Hills, held on August twentieth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven p.m., prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building and said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with notice of introduction thereof being published in, in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-four seventeen, bond ordinance submitting and supplementing bond ordinance number twenty twenty-three nineteen, heretofore finally adopted on September fifth, twenty twenty-three, by the township Persippany Troy Hills and the county of Morris, Deter, New Jersey, to increase the appropriation therein to one million seven hundred thousand, increase the authorization of bonds or notes therein to one million seven hundred thousand, and to increase costs provided in NJSA forty A, colon, two dash twenty. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council at the township Persippany Troy Hills, held on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven p.m., prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building and said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to, motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to the non-consent agenda, resolution twenty twenty-four one forty-one, granting a major toll for moving permit to S.K. Three Century Associates LLC, Block two oh two, Lot one point seven. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R twenty twenty-four one forty-two, authorizing and directing submission of grant application for fiscal year twenty twenty-three community grant. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R twenty twenty-four one forty-three, authorizing order contract to Union Painters Incorporated for the Mountain Way Tank Rehabilitation Pro- Project. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R twenty twenty-four one forty-four, authorizing the purchase of two, two, uh, twenty twenty-five Ford Explorer four-wheel-drive vehicles with options. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R twenty twenty-four one forty-five, authorizing a contract for the Persippany Township Senior Center Roof Project. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez.